Reports, we have no word reports this month. Student council, is there anyone here from student council? Or is there anybody on Zoom with student council? Any student council wish to speak at this point? Well, hopefully school gets started soon and we get some student council with us. Hopefully September up there.
I know.
Get a new group of student council and get to see some kids. We'll move on to public comment at this point. At this point, public comment is for agenda items only. So if it's on the agenda, you can comment on it. If it is not, then it will wait till that second set of public comment. So is anyone in the room wish to have public comment on agenda items? As any, yeah, these people all in the room, does anyone want to speak on agenda items? Or do you want to wait for the public comment?
Okay, hi, I'm Tony Carava. I have three kids.
We need your name, your address, and what you're referring to on that.
Oh, okay.
And then you'll have three minutes.
My name is Tony Carava, 212 Longville Lane, Mars, in Adams Township. And I'm looking, I'm referring to the health. Programs number one on the.
You have three minutes.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to come, I read through the response to the PA Department of Education. And I think after, at first I was kind of nervous about what it was going to be. But I fully support, I fully support everything that you guys are doing. Especially, I'm very much against masks in schools for kids. I think there's been a million studies that said, that talks about how it's bad for them. The rebreathing of carbon dioxide, I know my kids come home, they're more tired. I just think, and then there's been no studies at all that support masking in general helps any of the general population whatsoever. And kids are particularly not at risk. So there really is no reason to have any kind of masking of kids in schools. And the, you know, as far as the teachers, the vaccine is free. And whoever wants it's free country, whoever want LSCV. So whoever wants to get the vaccine, can get the vaccine. It's up, you know, and as far as the teacher population goes, so I'm in full support of the, the optionality of it. And as far as the other places like social distancing, I'd be all for eliminating social distancing as well. Because again, the six feet with some random number that somebody pulled out of the air, no science, no support, no studies. And also, all of the studies that have come out from the UK and from Israel with lots of kids, not just like these little studies RCTC does and hardly anything, is showing that kids recover from it 99.9% of the time. They're just fine when they get it and they don't transmit it very well either. So I'm in favor of the minimum amount of COVID protocols, I guess. And I think that you guys have got a nice thought to kind of balance that. So I'm in, I'm in support of that. Although I would like to request the water fountains to turn back on. That would be the only thing. I'm all for like good cleaning and I think that's was probably a good thing anyway, just for general, you know, health of the, everybody in the building, so even more cleaning. But I would like to request like water fountains, I mean, they can be back on. And then no social distancing like at lunch and recess and not worrying about stuff like that. The kids are together all summer, they're fine. They're together at sports, they're together, you know, every other time. So it just seems silly. So I'm happy that common sense was the rule with the Mars School District, did not the exception. Unfortunately, just what we usually see on the news across the country, especially with school boards. And so I'm really happy with everything that you guys have done.
Thank you so much.
Just one follow up to what you mentioned. How many, though, in the building, how many of the water fountains are bottle fillers versus pre water fountains?
I don't know the number, but we had a lot of bottle fillers last year. But it's funny, we talked.
But just a thought, like even if there is some rule on it, could the bottle fillers be turned on and not the water fountains? If there is some type of restriction on that, PD, you whatever, I would think the bottle fillers. I noticed a lot of places are doing that now.
Yeah.
And I don't believe there's any restrictions in any.
And I don't know, I don't know if you shut them off, just a thought, because that's.
Okay.
Okay, alright. Those who never shut off. Okay.
I have little kids, I don't know where. Okay.
Always.
The water fountains are something, we have another meeting tomorrow to try to like fine tune specific things we want to do. That's definitely, we just talked about that, we're 30 today. About water fountains and all those things, so more to come.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room want to have public comment on agenda items at this point? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom wish to have a public comment on agenda item at this point? Evans family? Evans, so you have public comment on agenda items. So if you say your name, your address, and the agenda item you're referring to.
Yes, hello, my name is Lauren Evans, 322 Village Drive, Mars, 16046. I have a comment regarding the health and safety plan. And I understand that is a big F. And I understand that prior to the CDC guidance being released, my concern is that since the CDC has come out with guidance recommending that all unvaccinated children and staff be masked, that your mask policy be revisited, especially since just yesterday, the American Academy of Pediatrics came out recommending universal masking for all staff and students in school. And so I would just hope that you would reconsider that, given that is the guidance that we're supposed to follow. Thank you.
And that guidance is disgraceful. It's absolutely disgraceful.
This public comment for her, you cannot respond to her. Thank you very much for your public comment. Sorry, yeah, you cannot respond to another person's public comment.
Is this a TP?
We don't want public comment to turn into debate. Sorry, Mike.
She needs to be straight.
Thank you, thank you for your public comment. Is there anyone else on Zoom or online? Yeah, we're gonna cover that.
I will cover that. I'll cover our current plan.
Beth, if you could say your name, your address, and you have public comment on agenda item. If you can let us know what agenda item you're speaking of, and you have three minutes.
Hi, yes, my name is Beth Ziegler, 2039 Golden Grove Drive, Mars PA 16046. And I'm also commenting on programs number one.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to commend you guys last year. I think you did an incredible job last year in terms of preventing COVID transmission at the schools. It appeared from the communications sent by the district last year that transmission occurred mainly outside of school hours or during extracurricular activities. And the difference there in the district's own communications that we received was that kids were masked in school and they were not masking when they were outside of school in hanging out with other kids or doing extracurricular activities. So therefore, the data not just from, not just from federal, state, and local governments or public health agencies, but from your own data and communication as a district, that data showed that masks do work in the prevention of transmission of COVID. I'm just, I'm confused why the district is continuing to follow some recommendations from the CDC, like the continued use of physical distancing, hand washing, signage, et cetera, which are included in the health and safety plan and not others. Perhaps like Ms. Evans said, it's because the guidance came out after you already put the plan together. I feel like we're very close to the finish line here. The emergency use authorization for the Pfizer vaccine is expected for ages two through 11 in September, October. I'm just confused why we would run this marathon, stop two miles from the finish line, risking a child contracting COVID, developing long COVID, which unfortunately, I have a child in my family, a five-year-old who has long COVID, or perhaps dying when we can prevent that for a few more months. So I'm just urging you to please reconsider the mask requirement until the EUA comes through for the vaccines for that age group. It's going to be one to two more months and then it's parental choice how you choose to protect your child. Thank you.
Thank you for a public comment. Is there anyone else on Zoom that wish to have public comment on agenda items at this point? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. We did have closed sessions on July 14th. And this evening at six o'clock for personnel, legal, and a student issue. Make that public. You got that? Close session on July 14th. And then this evening at six o'clock for personnel, legal, and a student issue. Thank you. So on the main agenda, under approved amendments, can I have a motion for number one and three? One, two, three, sorry.
Seven.
Seven, second. Seven, first and a second. Public or comment questions? Seeing none, on favor, I?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Seven minutes, very. Moving on to addendum number one, under personnel. We're going to look for a motion to approve numbers one through 19. Have a motion, second.
Megan, seven.
So I have a first and a second board questions, comments?
Welcome.
Any other board comments? All in favors for personnel number one through 19, all in favor, I?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Step passes. Under addendum number one, under personnel, number 20, can I have a first and a second?
This is Megan, seven.
Seven, second.
So I have a first and a second. Board comment, questions? Seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Dorsh? Ms. Ferguson?
No.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Mr. Mulberger? Ms. Blenda?
Yes.
Ms. Whit?
Yes.
Mr. DeCretis?
Yes.
Six, yes. One nay. And two absent.
That passes. Are there addendums, under addendum number one, under personnel, numbers 21 through 30, have a first and a second?
Kevin, seven.
Anthony, second.
Dr. Chris, do you want to give us a little brief on number 29?
Yes, if you look at number 29, that's, that's the social media consultant. That's come up several times since I've been here since last July. So what we did is we actually went out and got quotes for bids. We had quite a few, we had quite a few from out of the area. But obviously that was concerning to us because they weren't even close enough to cover the things that we would like to cover. We had, some of, some we had to screen out because they didn't give a salary recommendation, which led us to a handful of applicants. And so KC Consultants is the actual name. This is just the owner, but KC Consultants actually came in. And the nice thing to point out is, it was about $7,000, a year under any of the other lowest bids. But on top of that, keep calling it a bid, it's not a bid. But on top of that, the 33 hours, that's a cap. So she will be paid for hours worked not to exceed 33,000. So it does not commit the board to 33,000. It could be, could be 33 if she works so many hours or it could be less. So that was the most attractive of the offers that we had. And it wasn't the person we had here in the past who we have much confidence in. So we're asking for, for a three-year signed agreement. Just for some continuity and consistency moving forward.
Thank you. I didn't flip the page, so it's actually numbers 21 through 34. So can I have a motion to amend the motion to make it 21 through 34 under personnel?
Megan, seven.
Anthony, second.
Sorry about that, I just, I was getting kind of happy there. Any board comment?
I do just one question on that. I think, I believe with consulting last year, we, we didn't meet our cap last year, we were on there, correct? Okay, so that gives an idea historically.
Did not meet our cap last year.
Below, okay.
And the rate is flat.
And the rate is flat from same rate as last time, correct?
Correct, same rate as last.
Okay.
And this is Megan, I just wanted to point out that number 33 is actually increasing the starting wage for some of the open, per professional, student, and those types of positions. So tie friends, come work here.
Take notes, new contract.
Yeah.
And retirement.
Good retirement achievement.
So I have a first and a second on numbers 21 through 34, all in favor, I?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Step carries. Back to the main agenda, under finance, have a motion under finance, number one through 15.
Kevin, seven.
Anthony, second.
More discussion, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, I? Opposed, nay? Carries. On the main agenda, under programs, can I get a motion for numbers one through seven?
Would you like me to speak to the health and safety?
Number one, right, okay. Yeah, we'll get the motion and then I'll just go. Okay, that worked. So under program number one, can I have a raise?
Stay on summit.
Kevin, second.
So I have a first and a second. Dr. Chris, would you like to tell us about that?
Yes, I do.
Sorry for interrupt.
No, you're good, good. Yeah, as you even heard through public comments tonight, the health and safety plan is something that we're not going to have 100% consensus. I remember last year was my first year here and we were opening our schools. Other schools were closed. The emails weren't pretty, but I had to realize that I couldn't personalize those. We ran the gamut from open your schools, education is important to literally someone saying you are going to have blood on your hands, how dare you? It was, it was not easy. We continued to get beat up, but as I always continue to say when I wake up and look in the mirror every morning, what's my number one job and it's education. Education is the most important thing in the world to me, because that's why I do what I do. And our kids continue to suffer. We were one of the few that stayed the course last year, much to the chagrin of many. It's not easy and you have to learn how to take the criticisms. So I'm loading this, knowing that not everyone will be happy. Right now, the most recent communication we've received from the Department of Education is there, and it was in bold, I got it Monday. There will be no additional guidance provided by the Pennsylvania Department of Health and PDE. Now that could change, because who knows, pressures? Right now, they're basically saying there are no mandates. Without the mandates, knowing it's such a polarizing situation as we worked through this health and safety plan, and I'm jumping to the very first thing, the universal face mask. My recommendation to the board will be, just as it was last year. We don't want to be reckless, we don't want to be careless. If there should be something called to our attention that we need to immediately change gears, I'll do that. Because we're not going to be reckless or careless. But right now, there are no mandates on schools. PDE is basically backing off, much like the Pennsylvanians. You know, you can walk around Pennsylvania now and they're recommending vaccinated versus not vaccinated, but they're not mandating anything right now. So our recommendation right now is masks is just a matter of wearing a mask. You get into some of the things that people talk about, how it impedes the ability to learn, it's distracting. We want it to be a parental choice. So to get the elephant out of the room, we are saying students and staff will utilize masks on a voluntary basis. If folks firmly believe in masks, then we're okay with that. If folks firmly believe, as we heard some comment, we're okay with it. It needs to be a parental choice. I don't think it's the school's role to dictate to parents what they do with their children as much as we do in a lot of things in this, in our bureaucratic world. So we will open, we will have the masks being optional. The only place it will not be optional, because it's a mandate and it's a federal requirement, is on school buses. School buses are continued public transportation. So they must be worn, drivers must wear them, students must wear them. So with that being said, we plan to open as normal next year, try to be as traditional and back to normal as possible and have the focus be on education with as few distractions as possible. The second part of the plan talks about physical distancing. If you remember, it was six feet and then it evolved into three feet. We continue to say that we will continue to physically distance and social distance as feasible, which means we want to, we don't want to go out there and guarantee anything or lead people through false perceptions of what we're doing. If it's feasible, we will. If it's not, we won't. I mean, if it compromises our ability to educate, we will not force that. But in areas that we can, and we have a meeting tomorrow, so I don't want to get too specific, because I, we're still working through this. We have an administrative meeting nine o'clock tomorrow, all the principals, myself, central office, Dr. McMahon. We were all going to talk through the minutia of water fountains and lunches and tables versus desks to try to see what makes the most sense. So where we're not being reckless, we are being somewhat responsible, but we're not tampering our ability to educate kids to the maximum extent possible. So hand washing, we will continue to encourage through signage. Wash your, it's just good hygiene anyway, you know, if it's not COVID. We'll continue to do that. We are going to keep the little arrows on the floors. Just a little subtle reminder, does it, does it absolutely guarantee students stay in those lines? No, it doesn't. But we want to still have those subtle reminders that, you know, be concerned, be responsible. Ventilation, we'll continue to keep a look at, an eye on our ventilation. I know last year our maintenance, the central department did an awesome job. Some of our ventilation systems are older, some are newer. We're going to keep those at max capacity. Contact tracing, haven't really got a lot of guidance on that yet, but we will consider. I believe we're still going to have to do contact tracing. Don't know yet, that's sort of the big mystery. So right now, all I can tell the committee is we will continue to do contact tracing. What that means, we don't know yet. That guidance is very vague. It used to be if you were within six feet for 15 minutes or longer, you had to quarantine. Not real sure on that yet, so that's something we're working through. We will do whatever we are required to do by the Pennsylvania Department of Health. And again, I know that the, and I appreciate the comments, you know, that we received order for those who want masks. But the reality is that it's not mandated. And until it's mandated, we're going to make it optional. That way, everybody has their choice coming into this. We will not do screening or diagnostic testing. There's been a push to have the district host vaccinations, things like that. It's my firm belief that we will share through our communications department, if and when we're aware of vaccination clinics. But because it's such a polarizing issue, once again, I want that to be a parental choice. I don't want it to be a sanctioned event by the district. That should be a choice that is a parent's choice and not the district's choice. So we will make parents aware of those vaccination centers and opportunities, but it's just an awareness. There will not be any push either way. And that's, that's a choice. And again, accommodations for students with disabilities is in this plan and safety policy. I specifically put in there that our accommodations are not just for students with disabilities. We do that, we know we need to do that. We should be held accountable for that, but all students that need accommodations, we will. We have specific students that have specific needs, whether they have disabilities or they're just simply having a medical condition. We'll continue to work with families. And I think any family out there that has communicated even during the highlight, shouldn't say highlight, maybe it's a low light, but the worst parts of pandemic, know that, that we worked our, our very best to try to accommodate any specific needs of students. And I, we end our plan by simply saying coordination with state and local health officials. We will continue to, to work with Buffalo County Health Services. Our superintendents last year met weekly with, with them, we got recommendations, we, we talked to the doctors. We will continue to do that as long as that is, is there. And also, there's something called AHN updates that we get our nurses to believe in them, but I sneak a peek. And thank goodness Brenda Gerber is our lead on that. She, she shares that information comes through. We will continue to do everything that we're mandated to do. We're not going to be rebels, we're not going to against the grain. But right now, there are no mandates and it allows for local control. And based on the communications that I've received in my office, there are those that are pro mask, pro vaccination. But based on the feedback of the folks that we service, the majority of which, of, of the communications I've received as please make it a choice. So we're listening to that and we'll plan to do that. One other thing you may read, and this is for the board and the committee, you rate, you may read that the health and safety plan is connected to your SRR fund, which it is. And the SRR funding mandate says that we must have a health and safety plan up posted by July, into July, which we've already done, and also uploaded into something called e-grants. Some folks are confusing that is if you don't comply with this mask order, you somehow lose those funds. Right now, what they're basically saying, the state is saying, we're not saying anything other than you have to have one. So if that changes, that will be a board level decision on how much local control you want. If it changes that the mandates must match some type of specific groups recommendation that goes against what we want to do, that's about a million ninety-nine dollars, I believe, also done. That goes to benefit kids in other ways. That may be something we have to look at to decide which way we want to do it. But right now, the SRR funding is tied to the health and safety plan, but it's just saying you must have one uploaded. And there are no mandates, so just like last year, you're not, we're not going to win everyone over. We're going to have people feeling this way, that or the other. But our number one goal is to educate students. It's our role, it's our niche in this society and in this community. And to do that in the most effective way, I believe, is to minimize distraction. So masks should be a, a, a parent choice. So that is my recommendation for the health and safety.
You talked about masks on the bus, transportation wise, kids are going to be allowed to drop off that same.
Yes, because of the masking issue being required on buses, it may cause some folks not to want their children to ride the bus. So we have not changed our drop off procedures at any of the buildings so that parents that want to drive can drive their children if they don't want them to, to deal with the masks or any of the mandates. It'll be the same as last year.
Drop off.
Dr. Chris, can you briefly touch on what the options are for education in the fall last year? We have some different options.
Yeah.
Can you touch on what happens if your child is quarantined?
Yes, if your child, that's a great question. The options last year, we had, we had three, three boats. We had traditional, then we had something called LSI, which students could stay home and, and watch, peek into their class, for lack of a better word. And then we had cyber. We are eliminating the LSI option. The LSI option, and it's not the students' fault, we created it. We were intentionally accommodating as we went through that. But LSI created some bad situations. We met with our teachers. Our teachers had a really hard time juggling LSI and students. And it got to the point in some situations, typically students got older, it got a little, a little messy as far as what was going on, on the, on the computers. Not anything immoral or unethical, just very, very distracting. So we eliminated the LSI option because we are saying we're back traditionally, face to face, five days. Or if you're extremely concerned, we do have our cyber academy, that option. We do not have LSI. LSI, though, if, if we're required to contact trace and someone has to stay home, we've already shared this. Teachers will still be required to allow students who are required to remain home due to some state or federal mandate to be educated through LSI. So LSI as a choice, no. LSI is a measure. to be educated through LSI. So LSI as a choice, no. LSI as a measure to reach kids who have to remain home, yes.
Thank you. And last but not least, can you speak briefly to the Mark Cyber Academy that I think is on the free five wraparound here and will keep the doing some cheap things here to make that a very viable option for our families?
Yeah. And I, when I first got to Mars last year, a long time ago, it seems like, July one, there was a lot of concerns Mars area cyber academy. We went through this big thought of like revising. What we've come to find is, and I don't know, it wasn't, somewhere along the line, I truly believe it got a bad rap. We did a survey. We had, and I will not embellish, we had several teachers in core content areas. Take a look at the content. The feedback was pretty much like really not an issue matching our curriculum. In some cases, the response was that it went in a little more depth, but not breadth. So that, we found the courses somewhere along. So what was the issue? We did that survey. We believe the issue was just that connectivity with the, with the parents. And I didn't bring it tonight or I'd read it to you, but I will share it with the board tomorrow. Dr. Glosser and I met to try to come up with a campaign, if it's not the curriculum that people side away from. Because the, the, the platform we use waterfront learning, which is Edgenuity, it's actually very successful in other places. I think it's the marketability and the bad map that it got. But what we found is the connectivity was an issue. So we have it, I'll share it out tomorrow, remind me someone. I will share out the plan next year for students in the cyber academy that will that will connect them much greater to the district. Required meetings, required staff reaching out to them. So we're making moves that way.
So we're hearing what you were saying and we're trying to react to it in order to.
Yes.
You know, when I got on this board, we heard constantly from people saying Mars Cyber Academy is a problem. And that's something we really asked as a board and we've gotten the feedback that if it is a problem or less believed, but what I think is really interesting is we often approve these students, you know, student B to take an online course. And those are all the waterfront learning courses that would be similar to what you would get at Mars Cyber Academy. So there's actually a lot of Mars students whose families are choosing to pay whereas they did Mars Cyber Academy through the school district because they felt that maybe they didn't feel as safe for their child to return, but they're still technically a Mars student then it would be covered by the district. And parents are actually choosing to spend their own money for children to take these courses to propel them further Mars. So I guess my roundabout point is, it can't be that bad if we're, if we're making this a choice. And my last question is, if you utilize Mars Cyber Academy, you know, say my son is ill and I want, or I'm concerned over masking, and I choose to keep him home until there was a option for vaccine. That's not what my personal choices, but if that was an option, could that child then return to Mars in person?
We will embrace with open arms, any student that wants to return traditionally.
So if you choose Mars Cyber, it's not a year in locked in program?
You are not locked in. Actually, we are highly hopeful that students come back. Last year, there was a lot of, and I'm editorializing, in my opinion. There was a lot of reluctance by some to send their children. And I truly believe, based on what I'm seeing this summer, there, those that were reluctant are realizing like, wow, we've gotten a lot back. Not saying we won't have a lot leave, I don't think so, but we've received a lot of students coming back who realize that we're not reckless in keeping our students. And it's my editorial. I believe the best learning takes place in the classroom, hearing other students' questions and answers and engagement with the teacher as opposed to any synchronous. Doesn't make those that take the asynchronous model and run with it, bad people, they may learn differently. But I truly believe there's a lot lost by not being in the class.
Or they're like, maybe they're traveling, maybe their child is a, I think what I was hoping to get across is every parent has to make this choice. And I can't be sure that these plans are really different. I'll say anyone ever pleads everyone. And everyone has their own personal belief of what's best for their child. But we have options here. The options are not simply come to Mars or don't. There is Mars Cyber. You can come back and forth. There are things that parents could do if they feel that this isn't what they want to do.
And with LSI, I was actually pleasantly surprised. I thought we had some folks would be upset with us. But I had a lot of people saying, thank you so much, because now I don't have to fuss on whether they're going to school or not. You know, so that's, it'll weirdly, we took that pressure on parents, some of them, not all.
It was miserable to LSI little children. Where's space for that?
I always said it was the lifeboat and we needed the lifeboat, but it's time to get back on the ship.
There's one other clarification that I know a lot of the curriculum aligned, but in areas where it did not, we are, we are recommending and we are in a position to send feedback to waterfront learning and they will adjust the.
It's actually Edgenuity's.
Well, Edgenuity, I apologize.
And I'm just saying it. And yeah, Edgenuity has the ability, you, we have the ability to edit, modify as.
So we are doing that as we feel there may be, if there is any.
That's the irony of it. Most of the content we found, there was very little recommendation. There was one high school course to be nameless because I can't remember. That's why it's named. But there was one high school course that didn't feel, went in in as much depth as in the one area. So that's something that we're going to be working on.
We're actively able to do so and to use it. So parents are aware that this is a viable option. It's not a problem.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, there was another comment on the health and safety plan. I appreciate the effort the administration put in. Our first line defense is, the first line of defense is actually the parents. And it's a policy that's been in place as long as I can remember. Don't send your kids when they're sick. Please don't. I don't care if it's a stomach bug. I mean, a couple of years ago, the middle school was wiped out by a, just a stomach bug, like, or my kid's gone, actually. But that's been a policy. COVID shouldn't change that. So please keep an eye on your children.
You know what? It's a great thing. And it's a segue. And I didn't realize I have to segue it. But
Yes.
So there's a lot of questions on what if my child was, is ill because LSI was good for that? I tell people snap your fingers and we all wish that we were there. Snap your fingers prior to COVID. What did you do when your child was ill? You kept them home. We made sure that they've had that caught up and we worked with you to get that work. So it's the same way. So yeah, I agree wholeheartedly. Keep your children home if they are ill, just to be safe. And that would be not just COVID, anything. Because we will work with you to make sure that they get caught up.
They will get.
LSI is strictly, we're forced to stay at home, where we are forcing them to stay home. And again, that is very muddy now. We're not sure whether that's going to continue or not. We're waiting on more guidance. So as of now, I'm saying we continue. So that's all.
Any other work comments? So I just want to be real close so I can say yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
Yes.
Mr. Mulverde?
Ms. Valenza?
Yes.
Ms. Whit?
Yes.
Mr. DeCresis?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsh? So that is seven yes and two no.
Closer to this common fault. So I'm back to the main agenda under programs, number two through seven. Just the priorities two through six or two through five, if you drop the pending list, I've reviewed it and made the change. Okay, so we can drop it. All two, three, four and five. The only one that still would be number seven under finance is already, but the rest of them are good.
Which we very much.
Thanks. It's going to have a motion and it's a lot. So I have a first and a second for questions, comments.
This is Megan. I just want to say thank you to the staff here who are overseeing a lot of these quote unquote students who are coming in and allowing us to utilize their learning capabilities for free to help our kids even more. So it's one more added thing our staff is doing to help our kids.
Any other work comment, questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Your name? Step past it. So under policies, can I get a motion for numbers one through three?
Stephen.
Steve, second.
I have a first and a second. Ferguson, would you like to give us a recap on a review of the policy 101?
On our agenda this evening, we have been asked to approve and revise policy, policy 101 for posting, which means that the board has reviewed the policy. We will take action on it. If it's approved, it will go on the district website for thirty days for public comment and review. And then after that thirty day period, we would tend to take action on it at that point. Policy 101, and I'm going to refer to my notes here, is an existing policy that talks about the district's mission, vision and value statements. Like any major organization, right? So at a high level, it states the organization's purpose, what it strives to become in the future, and its core beliefs that guide those actions, right? This policy was last revised in 2015. And everything in the policy as it is written and exists today will remain exactly the same. The revision that we're going to talk about now is additive. And we're adding it, not because it's actually anything new per se, nor is it because there's the problem we're trying to address. And it's really important that you understand those things. It is actually a documented affirmation of the district's longstanding beliefs and practices. Given the national narrative that is trickling down to local school boards across our nation, the Mars Board wanted to proactively and publicly either reassure or maybe remind those who might be curious about our position on the subject or may have questions or concerns. And I'm going to sum up the revision, or we're going to put a headline on it. It would say the Mars Area School District Loves America. The policy revision adds a core value that reads quality education should promote students to be informed, engaged and patriotic. And then under those categories, it affirms various ways that we as a district will continue, continue to demonstrate this core value. I'm not going to read the whole policy now. I am going to paraphrase. So I encourage people to go back and read the language. It'll be posted on the website. But I do want to highlight some of the, the points under this policy, under this proposed policy revision. The Mars Area School District will display the American flag at all of its buildings, athletic facilities, classrooms. Will provide an opportunity for students to recite the Pledge of Allegiance every day. Will play the National Anthem at home athletic events. We will continue to respect each free speech. Consent, religious, I'm nervous. Say that again?
Concise.
Concise. I think I typed your wrong. Thank you. And release liberties of all students, administrators, teachers and other staff. So we're going to follow the constitution. About that surprise idea. Encourage eligible, eligible students to register to vote and for them to support school sponsored student government organizations. We're going to, we're going to prohibit the teaching of concepts that assign fault, blame or guilt to people solely because of their race, sex or religion. And we will also affirm that publicly funded resources will not be used to support programs, curriculum, supplemental materials in any format that indoctrinate students in a single social, political, ideological or theory or that one or resources that promote one's race, religion, sex above another. The policy expressly ensures that the impartial study and discussions of political or controversial issues that relate, that relate to course content will continue in our classrooms, including the sharing of factual information about historical and current events. All sides of an issue will be represented and debated when supported by primary and balanced secondary sources so that students are well informed and can make their own decisions about such matters. And be it known that social theories such as Holocaust denial, the sixteen nineteen project, the nine eleven conspiracy theory, critical race theory, to name just a few, will not be presented to students unless approved by the school board in a public meeting. And that the district's curriculum standards that are taught using well documented factual resources and are not based on opinion or conjecture. It is important to note that the policy language does not diminish anyone's personal rights or liberties as protected by the law. That is a great thing about America. And no one should wonder, worry or sue where this school district stands. We will teach our children to honor America, to love themselves and to respect each other. And we strive to nurture their individual talents and interests in their personal pursuits and habits. This right here and right now is the power and importance of local control. We are exercising it and we need to guard it and protect it. And as always, per our policy, this draft policy will be posted on the district's website probably tomorrow.
Yep.
For community review and comment for thirty days. So John asked me to frame this up. I'm sure that other people would like. What?
Josh, I'm joking.
Okay, well.
So very soon. They got it up and going.
The nuts and bolts of this, this is the nuts and bolts of the policy revisions. And that bar will be noted on here in a moment for public posting. But I'm sure there are other people who would like to say, but that's a suggestion. So thank you for your attention.
Approved. Thank you, Ms. Ferguson.
I wonder what that word was they typed in on that.
He, he made us all proud and honored to be from America but from Mars tonight. It's, it's very inspiring. That was excellent. Any other work comments? We should bring something up. Pretty decisive.
The only asterisk I would add is I think it's very important to note because this is something that had been talked about the last two months here around town. If you pay attention to what we do at the board, we approved social stage curriculum actually months ago for the next, how many years? Twenty years?
Six years.
And we at the board were aware that these types of things weren't in it. But that was something that people were repeatedly bringing up, especially during election season. We had already made decisions for the next five years about what type of curriculum we'd be here for our students.
Sorry about that, guys.
So I have a first and a second.
Again, this is proposing the policy for community review.
Yeah, for thirty day.
And I think, thinking back to what Megan said, I think we did make a decision on curriculum. I think this takes and surrounds the rest of the curriculum with where we want any additional things that could add it on within that classroom to support the curriculum that we've already decided on. I guess it's better.
Well, what we adopted was the resources.
Correct.
Was it the textbook, which is not necessarily.
That is correct.
And was that thing essential in my head?
I was thinking about you. We can save a couple of boxes.
So I have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Step past it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. My, very much.
Okay, so under the main agenda under other, number one through twelve. I have a first and a second.
Kevin, the second.
So I have a first and a second. Board discussion comments? Four different organizations there being recognized. More discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Your first name?
Although those are kids taking waterfront learning.
Sure.
A lot of times, right.
Let us know anything on the main agenda.
I'm helping with this.
I see that. So moving on, moving on with the main agenda and the public comment. At this point, we are, we have public comment, which is open forum. You can talk about, about anything you want. You cannot, you cannot name personnel directly. So we had first sign up, looks like Wendy Gallagher.
Hi.
Just state your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Wendy Gallagher, two thirty Crestmont Road, Pittsburgh, one five two three seven. I'm actually.
Hold on one second. Do you, do you live in the district?
I don't. I'm here with my friends who do.
Okay. You cannot speak if you're not a district resident. They can speak as district residents.
If I'm an attorney, may I speak?
Or that would be up to ours.
Well, it's fine. I mean, if you're representing, then words, I think that's fine.
Okay, now, do they get three minutes each also? Or is it, we, are we?
Well, if you're representing.
If you're representing, then you're.
That would be their three minutes.
You're going to take one of the three minutes off.
Actually, I'm really here as Mason, I teach at a tutorial center.
You have three minutes, service, go ahead. Sorry.
So I teach at a tutorial center here in Mars. Mason has taken a few of my classes. And Mason wants, he's, he's going to be a senior. He previously attended Mars, but he, he wants to attend the Career and Technical Center. He really, and I know, like, you know, we can talk about the law because I really think this PDE that the Department of Education puts out, I really don't know where they're getting that homeschoolers have no access to this, that it's a discretionary thing. Because I think based upon Title twenty four of, you know, the, the whole public school law, you know, it's, it's clear, it's very clear. No pupil shall be refused admission to the courses in these additional schools when, by reason of the fact that his elementary academic education is being or has been received in a school other than a public school. Now, just about every, really every other type of student in the district, as long as they're a resident, can attend the Career and Technical School. But not a homeschooler, or as they call them now, home-based education. And so this is like this district group that's being singled out that really, and I can't find, there's no case law. There's really nothing in the law that's preventing that. But of course, they say it's discretionary in the school boards. And so we're here, we want to make this happen for Mason. We want, you know, he, he has really no other option in the sense that we can't replicate in a home-based education, in our tutorial center, we cannot replicate what, you know, a VOTAC, you know, I'm old, that's what we used to call it, what a VOTAC, you know, school does. And so he really wants to go there. He needs to go there. He's a senior. And so he's going to be irreparably harmed if he can't vote. And so he's here, he talked about, and his father is here. Again, I'm his teacher. I taught him. He's a great kid. It's one student. One student is here, one student. Can we make this happen? Dr. Bush, you talked about, I just love hearing you talk about educating students and your passion for it. And I'm thinking, here's one. Please don't deny him. You know, don't deny him. Just approve him to go. It's one, two, he's a senior. And the interesting thing is, let's throw out, if you know this. But there's legislation. There's, yes. You have a very right, he knows this. It's, you know, it's in the House. It's ten forty one. It's in the appropriations. It's going to happen. But it's not going to happen in time for him. And so, you know, if there is a way that we can get him there, you know, he's a senior, I would really, on his behalf, his father's behalf, he's a great kid. I've taught him. He does really well. And so I would really like to see, we can somehow work together. Thank you. I'm sorry, I took over three minutes.
Can I ask what you want to say at VOTAC?
Pretty much everything. Carpentry, construction, electrical, plumbing. Just the whole nine yards.
So Mason, you were signing up for your three minutes. Would you like to?
Are you siming?
We're in higher.
There is an offer tonight.
So your address, you wrote it down, it's what, one of five, Lowry's?
Lowry Drive, Bonchuk.
Okay. So I'll give you, uh, with your three minutes.
She pretty much hit everything on the list. Mason, I attended Mars here, sixth to eighth grade, and then I did high school through homeschools. I am requesting a policy change to allow homeschoolers from the Mars Area School District to attend Butler Vocational Technical School. Other homeschoolers from other districts are granted this. Pine Richland, Seneca, they get this privilege to better educate themselves in the career they're interested in. For the same reason, I'd like to attend VOTAC through Mars. My, my family pays taxes, school taxes, so I should have the resources any other Mars kid should have. Additionally, like she said, this is the only avenue to obtain this type of training and expertise for a homeschooler. I can't get VOTAC anywhere else. So I would greatly appreciate your consideration in this matter.
Thank you very much. Did a great job.
It was nice to hear from a kid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I always talk about how much I want more Mars kids to go to VOTAC. I personally went to the technical school. When I went to Pine Richland, we had homeschoolers that went on our bus with us, obviously. And I just want to say, you know, I personally respect your decision to homeschool your child. I'd like to see you guys here talking.
So just policy disallowed it? Just doesn't speak to, doesn't speak to.
Your, your other policy expressly, and the law requires you to allow students to have other educational methods to participate.
In homeschool.
Do we have to amend the policy then?
It's silent and there's no pass.
Okay. So that would not be a shock if I wanted to see this kid get it once. It was great.
I could take a look. I, I know he sent something to the board, referenced other districts. I didn't have time to search all the other districts. We can look at something.
It is interesting that we're legally required to allow him to play football if he wants to. But not in VOTAC. Like, it's an interesting caveat.
I think that's a lot of bills out there. We do, we have two meetings in August before the start of school, right? The tenth and the seventeenth, I thought I saw.
Is there a deadline, though?
I think it's.
Just set it up for VOTAC.
I think it's earlier than.
I think there's a, there's a deadline, but there is, the program's full up. This one.
Oh, oh, yes.
Some of the programs already told.
I think it's the third.
It's the third.
The third, third?
Yeah, it's the third.
So Cory?
Yeah.
Did you want to take your three minutes?
Not really. Just, he's finally figured out what he wants to do, so this would be great.
I think it's great that there is none of it. But he wants to go to college or not just go to college. And I don't think a lot of parents in this area realize that college is not the right option for everybody. And VOTAC has, what VOTAC was, because we did go up as a group two years ago, I think it was about that. And I'm amazed what VOTAC is today. And what they're offering. It's like, it's incredible what's up there, far more than anything we got from our district. And that's why the kids go, because we can't replicate it in the district. Right? You need to go and be trained by professionals that are educated in America.
And all our districts, that's what I do every day. We're, we're struggling, we're struggling to find people that want to do this.
You might get into Atlanta.
Hire you, my son.
Note that it's not VOTAC or college. They're often combined together. Like, I went to the technical school, and I also got a college degree. And a lot of times, you're actually able to get college credit at these technical schools that you can then utilize towards another degree. It's not an either-or thing. And I think that's something that people in this community have really come up to. And it's one or the other. I mean, our technical school has robotic.
Right, we had a lot of kids that went into computer, computer design and management at college that went to VOTAC advantage of the classes that VOTAC was offering in those areas. And then took that knowledge and went on.
Thank you for coming this evening. The board will obviously consider.
Thank you very much.
I think your presentation, very passionate for your students. So thank you for advocating for it.
Especially because, Jerry said he didn't hire you yet.
He's not going to, he's not going to pay you. I'm doing this because, you know, I, I've had him in several classes, and he's a very good kid, and he's a good student. And I'm very glad, like his father said, he's identified what he wants to do. He's got a plan, which is excellent. And I, I want to see that plan, you know, come to fruition. I really appreciate it.
It's nice to see a strong guy.
Next sign up, Bill Krishman?
Crennich.
Crennich. Just state your name, your address.
Oh, Phil Crennich, three thousand one Crennich Lane, one six oh five nine. Now, I'll be really brief because I just have a question about rumors flying around about the football coach from Pine Richland coming to, bless the school. That's all I want to know. I don't know who to address it to, if it's Mark or if it's.
Yeah, I, I can, I can share. There are a lot of rumors floating about additions to our staff. And I won't be as specific as you are, but there's a lot of rumors out there. And I can only say that who this board has already approved and has seated in the positions of football, that is our football staff currently. There is no entertainment of any additional folks. I believe we may have one opening that could potentially be filled, but the rumor of bringing a bunch of people on simply not happening, I remember.
Uh, Jeremy.
Jeremy Yoder, one sixteen. Jason Drive, one CPA. Just like to thank all of you for your hard work, the help, and saving plans and everything. I know it can't be easy trying to, you know, walk that tightrope of what the people you're serving want and what the state wants. I think you guys are doing a great job, and I appreciate what you put together. One question that I had was kind of surrounding communications. And maybe this is all kind of up in the air because it seems like there's a lot of it that's up in the air. So, but last year, it seemed like communication was a little overkill, you know? Two students are being quarantined here, students being quarantined there. This guy testified, and, you know, just emails flying in. A little, a little much. Is there any plan to?
There's a lot.
Is there any plan to create like a, some sort of dashboard, maybe, or something?
We actually do have one.
Oh, we do?
That posts, it'll, it'll, it'll give an update on type cases per building. It's updated weekly.
Okay.
What we promised last year, and I don't know if it was just to alleviate fears, we said we will announce when we have cases. But I agree, because it's all we did. And some people use the word transparency, and sometimes that's overused. But some people want us to be very forthcoming on what we're dealing with. But yeah, it was a lot. It'll probably still be a lot to start. But I'm actually hoping it's not a lot.
Right.
Based on the numbers that we're still seeing.
Okay.
As things sort of settle down as we go on.
Is that dashboard just on the school site?
Yeah, we have a COVID dashboard. It's on the school site. It's under the COVID tab, and it'll, every week, we update that.
Okay.
We send to the board prior to posting, and then our communications director posts that. So you'll be able to see total number of active cases, all that.
Right.
Great. Thanks for your, your comments.
Thank you. That's your first thought on that. I mean, I think the most important part of that, I believe, is that if a school is getting close to, if there was still a mandated closure number, if somebody's not monitoring the dashboard, all of a sudden, their child's school could be closed tomorrow. They're not aware of it. So that is the main concern, is that somebody's thinking their child's attending school tomorrow, and they're not. So I don't know if there's mechanisms within the dashboard that just the parents, maybe in that building, get an alert when they've been warned or something. I know it gets cumbersome to do all that, but that, to me, would be the only main thing, is that somebody wakes up in the morning, doesn't realize that their kid can't attend because the building's closed.
But I will say, embarrassing point. To your point, I have three kids of three different voting. And I literally missed important emails in regards to my kids because I would open my email, and I'd have fourteen emails from Mars Area School District. And I was like, oh, okay. We'll get to it.
Yeah, it's.
No, it is, it's tough. So anyway, just a thought. But it's a great, great point, yeah.
It almost conditions people to.
Delete.
Desensitize a little.
Because I, I get it twice, right? I get it on my.
That's something we can talk about.
Well, and if I'm remembering, stepped away from it for a little while, but if I'm remembering, the way that the, the, the school closure process happened was based on what the size of your school was and whatever. And you go ahead, Tom. And ours, like, I think we ended up with several small schools, which is actually, what, two students or something?
Yes, it actually ended up being three.
Three. So even if you're on the, you're all, you're the customer.
Yeah, you're always on the customer.
You're always on the customer. You know what I mean? So, and I, and I'm hopeful that, and I don't know if that's going to.
And that's the part I can't articulate about because it's a big mystery whether that's going to still be required.
But I do think it's important to remind parents, especially in young children, to prepare to be flexible this year as don't know what it will look like, or there's quarantines and things like that.
Yeah.
You know, I think that was a problem last year where parents had to go to work, and all of a sudden.
Yeah, they have, like I said, when you get down to three, it can happen in a day.
Three of the same question, same, yeah.
Three in the same family.
Yeah.
Any other public comment in the room? So if you went once, would you? I'll have to go to the Zoom world and see if there's anybody out there. I can come back to you outside. Oh, that's fine. You may have an opportunity if nobody's on here.
I can mention it to you after.
All right. Let's get through our public comment first because that's a challenge sometimes. Is there any public comment on Zoom?
Great.
Nope.
Last call for public comment on Zoom, and I'm going to the room.
Nobody's ready.
All right. So I'm second off the page.
Okay, just a quick, Tony, probably, and to follow Willie as Mars. You had mentioned about losing funding, I think, for, you know, it could be various things, right? Not just COVID. It could be, you know, losing funding or giving up any kind of control, right? Because the federal, maybe the federal government wants more control over something else. I would say if there, if it comes down to choices and the government, the federal government's saying whatever, whoever the federal government is, they say, well, we're not going to give you a million bucks then if you don't do this, and we don't believe it. Like, I would say, put it out to the community and we don't believe it, like, I would say, put it out to the community because the community might say, give, give them back a million bucks, we'll cover it. Yeah. So I would say if there's a way to, um, you know, if, if these things come up and it's controversial, to say, all right, let's see what the community says. Do we, do the taxes go up or whatever, or do we need to do this?
And in fairness, and I'll editorialize, if the government would do that, that would be a crime because those monies are really going to be dedicated to working with students. We have a committee that we started to bringing in a lot of things that benefit kids. So that's just my opinion. I, I, I don't think it's gonna happen, but I, a lot of people are reading it's tied to ESSR funding to help you take the plan, but it's, again, it's only right now saying you have to have one. But if it came down to that, yeah, I'd be extremely disappointed.
Yeah.
To say the least, because if you really want to educate kids, they'd be taking away opportunities for us to, to really maximize acceleration efforts, remediation.
Oh, yeah.
So hopefully that won't be an issue.
And there's our federal tax dollars, right? If we pay.
Yeah, right.
But I like the, you know, what you guys are doing here, especially what you said about keeping control local. If it comes to it, maybe our license code is from whoever, so that's easy to ensure the community will cover it.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone else wish to have a second comment or final comment?
One question, I'm listening, man, because I don't know. You may say, I should know. For you to get into the vocational school and get into the program that you want, is there an application deadline that's like looming over the head?
I'm not aware of one. They just said they could fill in that.
Because I know, contact Dr. Hyland. Because I know some shops sort of like they close early.
Well, you mentioned that, um, number of the classes have closed out.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm.
Not yet. My understanding, and you can speak for yourself then, go on.
Yeah, that's what the contractor program where he touches on all the different areas. Other ones are still, are starting.
Yeah.
I think it would be really helpful when you give back to them as soon as possible versus.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Hold a spot while we discuss it, vote or whatever.
Thank you for that. It's a great idea.
Thank you. Um, you could cut that in and finish it. I want, I, you do. M A E A, is there anyone from the association wishing to speak?
A little militaristic with that there.
M A E A, is there anybody on that group?
I don't see anybody.
You may.
I don't see anybody freezing their hands.
If not, school's starting soon. We'll see you then. The ministry, starting with Dr. Chris.
I actually do not have anything more than what I've always said because we have both meetings and not hostages and I'm afraid people are looking too. I'm good. I'm good.
Thank you, Dr. Chris. All right, Dr. McMahon.
Just a couple of things. We, for those of you who are still in the student meeting and looking at Dr. McMahon's report, we're showing the new programs. This is the reconstruction. We have thirty days of intensive Wilson training. So our entire Wilson team of teachers now in large area schools has been trained. They're ready for meditation. But just to assure that this is, it's not going to be a one and done. So we back out about seven different days that they will be coming back with us throughout the course of the year. Because, and we're also moving to foundations training, which is a pre-Wilson program that we'll bring into kindergarten for this school year. And so Dr. McMahon is coming, even though we're not working on Friday, we are. We're going to be here on Friday training and then we'll be here next Friday training and then we'll be returning again on August twenty third. And then additionally, we're coming back throughout the course of the year to offer modeling coaching and looking at error corrections and mastering, you know, and all the checks. So again, that's not a one and done. Additionally, we're looking at the Sunday training pieces. So she's going to come implementing that for us throughout the first year. So it's going to evolve. It's going to unfold. But so that you understand that foundations will start in grade K this year to implement this year. And we're bringing training in the winter to implement training for grade one, so lay that out for next year. So that will be evolved. But again, it's not a one and done. We backed off about seven days to move that through the course of the year. Additionally, we have totally different subject, the kind also. We had a federal funds committee meeting last week on the fourteenth. We had invited about forty different stakeholders to come discuss different funds that we received from federal funds. So we talked about title two, eight funding and, um, we put a survey out to the community. We learned some ideas of how we'd spend these funds. We also discussed title four funds and some ideas in the survey results so that you're aware of what we received back. The main threads in the survey were title two and title four were basically technology. That was our number one, right? We had a couple of, hey, put it in full, things like that. Um, but the funding isn't there for that. But, um, so lots of, lots of feedback within the hundreds, you know, between four hundred on each survey. But the, the main thread of, the common thread is, is technology. When we're looking at our ESSR funds, with our ESSR fund surveys, we are looking at approximately two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And that's a twenty percent piece and the monies do not need to be spent until twenty twenty four. But what we, the monies are intended to support, um, learning loss. And so our goal with these monies and our conversation that we had with our, our stakeholder committee was to kind of soundboard some ideas. Because we put the survey out there, the common thread in that survey that we received back was additional time with teachers, ten students. So, um, extended programming, which is kind of where we were kind of thinking, and, um, and additionally, technology. So we discussed a lot of ideas. Um, administration now is taking those ideas back. We're kind of, kind of meeting, that's part of a meeting tomorrow morning just to kind of lay out the foundational pieces of that and then look for that company to obviously give you more, more concrete, you know, paths and educating. But we had a lot of great dialogue, a lot of great feedback, great conversations. And, um, so look to hear us exactly how we're spending these monies. Now, again, ESSR money, just two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Title two money, it's about forty five thousand dollars and title four money, it's about eleven thousand. So it's not millions, but whatever, you know, I mean, people are a lot of, take the money and do what we want, but like we as a community, then we'll take the money and want a bit. So, so we're making sense in that and then to put that in August to be your, for a better way.
But this is technology, is it more technology or how to implement more technology?
Well, it was, it was more about like devices, okay, and.
Access to the curriculum.
Access to the curriculum, things like that with the technology. So, um, so we'll be meeting tomorrow with all the principals and we also, at that meeting, um, you know, uh, Mr. Morgan, our director of technology, he said, hear the different feedback. He's all talking more about all of that tomorrow with everybody. Digesting it all and just mapping out to move forward. And this funds are, we have it to twenty five, twenty twenty four. Okay, so it's not like it has to be spent today. Now, the title two and the title four, those are yearly funds that we, we, we get and it, and we spend each year. But at the same time too, those funds, a portion of those funds also go to our non-public schools. So we need to share that too. So there's just some things to kind of map out. And with the title, with every monies, pocket of monies that we receive, there's always rules and regulations and circulations. And sometimes they'll, like as an example, title four, we've been getting it for years now, never have we received over sixteen thousand dollars in that pot of money. But sometimes they'll say, yes, you may use it on technology. Sometimes they'll say, absolutely not, can't. So it just kind of changes. So right now they're saying that we can't. And when we did the survey, the, 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 the device. So we're, we're planning on that in August and, um, so we can.
Thank you, Dr. McMahon. Uh, Ms. Frank City.
I do have two things. Um, first one is regarding meals for the twenty one, twenty two school year. Uh, thanks to waivers issued by the U S Department of Agriculture. All meals served for breakfast and lunch will be free to all enrolled students in grades K to twelve this year. Even with the high, even with the secondary, they did that last year. We, we've modified a few things so they're able to be on the pro so that we.
Okay, okay. I was, because normally we just have an elementary. Got it, got it, got it. Okay, it's one to make sure.
Yeah, so they'll still be charged for, um, yeah, any kind of hours or not full meals. You have to pay for those.
Got it. Okay.
Or what they, they do when it's, you have to take fruit and vegetable, fruit and vegetable plus milk. So yeah, so we're, there's some paperwork we need to do on our end or that, but, um, those waivers were extended through June of twenty twenty two. The second thing I had was just want to let everybody know that, um, school tax bills will be picked up. County's a little bit behind in that, so tomorrow our tax collectors will be able to go get all their stuff and then work on getting the taxables ready to mail out. So, um, we actually made those will be mailed out to everybody, uh, the first weekend on, starting with the last step.
What you should do is talk about the taxes and then.
I didn't see evidence of sliding. Positioning is very poor.
Well, tax bills have their taxing fee, so those. Good recovery, good recovery.
Do you think, do you think for the roof? Do you think for the roof? The issue that we talked about.
No, because I think, um. Okay.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Just to the board to wear it.
Uh, there was some wind damage to, um, the team building, the team rebuilding at the middle school and, uh, wind damage it earlier this year. Um, so we had, the insurance company came out and they, uh, would only give us a, they wouldn't let us replace the whole roof as far as what they could cover of the insurance policy. So we got quotes to, maintenance coordinator had put to replace the whole roof. It would have done the, the, the limit or quote two would have had to build to fit it. Plus play based on the month, the one that we had, we'd have to get around anyway. So.
It's, it's a locker room.
A locker room. So it's a locker room. God, I'm in the wrong building. The two slopes on it have been, had shingles. So.
God, it's, it's.
So we're going to go back and see if we can get, we're having some difficulty getting quotes, but we do have a vendor who did give us a quote, so we're going to go back to him and see if he can get a quote. Just to replace the roofs that were damaged instead of the entire roof was built. And that should be.
Nice to know. It's, it's a good, it's hard to patch. I mean, if it's, if it's eighteen years old, we're gonna start patching a new shingles.
They would take out the whole, everything on that whole slope and replace that whole, um.
It's like, it's just tough to start piecing it like that. I don't know. Maybe it's worth looking.
Why don't we do this then? Why don't we have, Debbie and the maintenance people can look at partial repair, but if that's not good, then we'd like the board to authorize putting it up.
That's not what the options are.
Yeah. We just have a motion to do that, that would be case we need to.
Exactly, yeah.
You gonna make that motion? So, so go on, it's okay. We need to do it to replace it.
Okay. Make a motion for us to do that.
If we need, if we need.
Second.
First and second. You have to do this first and then it was second.
Okay, second. A motion to have to be replaced entirely.
If that's the direction, then we need to know it.
I don't need to know the index anyway, so I might as well go and fix it.
Correct.
We will understand.
Yeah.
The, the.
Make an informed decision.
Outcome of the.
Right.
Of the social replacement versus of.
Hey, you're gonna, you're gonna prove that as well. So whichever, whichever way you go.
All in favor of this motion?
Hi.
All right.
So we'll at least look at the. Something else.
Do we get any insurance coverage from the, didn't they, wasn't the gold post damage, then the, some of the track things that all part of the same day, same situation?
Same story.
Okay. Let's note that was, that was covered under that also.
It was, we, I think, we did the, um.
All right, thank you.
All right, Dr. McMahon.
We just, we're taking Rebecca Lund, our higher from last Monday on the halftime, to a full-time kindergarten teaching position. That is great because, um, basically so that we had coming into the month of July, we had thirteen families on our AMA meals. We were able to extend that, like, anyone on that AMA just be able to come into an AMA online session. There wasn't anybody that didn't get that.
By adding that.
To classroom sizes for kindergarten, we're going to be about twenty twenty two. But not all families that were on the waiting list accepted it just because they now have their transportation set up and we've got them. But, um, but we were able to offer to everybody who was.
Excellent.
Great. And Rebecca Lund.
And the other administration. Okay, board comments? What side of them starts? Four comments on this side over here.
Well, to see new faces, that's.
Get more people.
Yeah, to actually, to those who did take the time to read through the plan and comment, either here in person or sending us messages, we appreciate the feedback. I see if you are paying attention.
More comment on this side of it.
Dr. McMahon, I just have a quick question about the surveys regarding like the technology and the ability to use the funding for different things. Was there any discussion about utilizing some of that funding for the high schools? Had during a technology program, you know, we heard a lot about how the parents have had a need to evolve. Not because it's learning loss, but that.
Because that two hundred thousand dollars has to go through.
You know, we just heard over and over again how this is there and I, it was necessary and so I was pretty sure if that would be an option for that as well.
I just, I would like to, just my annual reminder that at the beginning of August, we typically just give an enrollment report.
We actually have it started.
You like it? Well, but I like the habit.
Our meeting is next Tuesday.
Glad you have.
Your next board meeting is next Tuesday. Is it Tuesday?
Well, it's, it's just a way for the, for the board to monitor the class sizes. And it's nice to, you know, we graduate all of our students and this year in particular, hopefully we'll see some of our students come back to the district based, based instructions. So it'd be nice to see sort of where we stand.
Sure.
And, and then just like Dr. McMahon mentioned, kindergarten teachers sometimes have to make an adjustment and you need time to do that. So if you wait until the end of or early September, it's sometimes a little bit too late. So it's just nice to have that data, um, early in, in the month. So, um, I just wanted to put that out there. And then the other little interesting little nugget, um, that I, that I learned typically, um, maybe, once it's, once COVID and, and this, one of those mandates that we, we have to do are, are high stakes testing, PSSAs and Keystone exams and things like that. And typically we would be, we would be getting, um, that data in terms of our achievement results or whatever they're worth. Um, you know, it's one moment and one time, it's a snapshot of a day, but we get those results typically in the beginning part of the summer. For Keystone exams, sometimes the students need to just, we take, or the summer would happen before that. And the board would usually get a full preview of those results. I'm particularly interested in seeing this year because Morris was in certain schools. Morris was in school and we're hoping that, you know, our results sort of show that, you know, our, our kids did make progress last year. Um, and, and so I'm, I'm just anxious to get my hands on the data, but apparently, um, while we're supposed to make decisions on ESSR funds and learning losses and where, and where are we starting and whatnot, the state is not sitting here at the, at the end of July, not releasing the data. So we are, you know, going on our instincts and feedback and kind of talking to our teachers and our staff administration, but, um, we don't, we don't have an answer on that. Normally this time we at least have a pretty good idea.
You do a preview.
Exactly.
Where you review it and use a test that that's right before they publish.
And that's September. That's, I know. We would normally get the raw data and then, and then have a public meeting once it was finalized in terms of student commitment or something like that. But, um, it would particularly be nice to know this year how our students.
Yeah.
Um, just so we can use that to help to, as the praise was said, meet them where they are, kind of get a sense of where that is. But, um, the state has not released that data. So I just thought that was interesting and it's good to like share here.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any other board comments? Okay, Anthony said it's great to see people here endorsing stuff. Hopefully that becomes more of a trend, less Zoom. I'd like to have just, we'll work through that hopefully this fall or sometime. Say the mission to adjourn. Others no closed session afterwards. Or do somebody, do you have signs?
Okay.
Does anyone?
No, I think we're gonna remove.
No one has any? All right. First and second. So, thank you for coming.
You're all in favor.
I think it's. I wanted to ask you to.